Welcome you. Have your attention, please.
Shalom.
My microphone on? Testing, one, two.
Test, test, test.
I can hear myself.
Talk now. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. It is May 15th, four o'clock in the afternoon. It is my honor and privilege to invite Pastor Renee Miller of the City Walk Urban Mission to please provide the invocation. Pastor, thank you for joining us.
Let's pray together. Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've created. I thank you for all your people here. I thank you for this community, God. We're proud of it, and I know that you created it and everyone in it. So, God, I ask for wisdom and direction today, that you would be honored in all that we do. I know that when our city prospers, your word says that we too prosper. So, I pray for prosperity in the city of Tallahassee. I pray for wisdom for all of our leaders, safety for our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, let me welcome everybody to the City Commission meeting. Commissioners, my goal is to get through as far as the agenda as we can, and at 5:30, we will call for a dinner break. We will come back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing and finish any unfinished business that we still have left on the agenda, okay? With that, let me move into any agenda modifications, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have one, Mr. Mayor. Attachment A of item 13.04 has been updated since the original posting of the agenda.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? Seeing none, we are going to move into presentations. We have three presentations today, and I would like to call on Commissioner Bryant for the first presentation and proclamation.
From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, proclamation. Whereas perinatal mental health is an issue of great concern to mothers, fathers, and families, as well as their health care providers, and is therefore of interest to the city of Tallahassee. And whereas many women and men are not screened or treated for, nor sufficiently informed about perinatal mood and anxiety disorders because they may like comprehensive health care, the understanding of the disorder, or where to go for help and care. And whereas perinatal mood and anxiety disorders do not discriminate as families of all races, income levels, ages, and backgrounds are impacted profoundly, contributing to developmental and behavioral outcomes and attachment disorders in the young children of afflicted women and men. And whereas increased education and heightened awareness of the incidence of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders is critical for all citizens of Tallahassee. And perinatal mood and anxiety disorders are treatable with timely therapeutic interventions, community-based supportive services, and medications that are used to treat the disorder. And whereas it is critical that citizens, communities, service providers, and support systems have a greater understanding of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders, the spectrum of symptoms, and critical factors in identifying mothers and fathers at risk to provide timely diagnosis and treatment, as well as appropriate support through community services and referral systems that coexist to facilitate recovery. Now, therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, along with the Tallahassee City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019, Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Month. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. John E. Daley on May 15, 2019.
Excellent. I have two more proclamations to present today, and right now, I would like to ask Ms. Jasmine Stanley of the Muscular Dystrophy Association and the members of the Tallahassee Fire Department, specifically Local 2339, to please come forward. First of all, let me go ahead and state to all the members of the Tallahassee Fire Department how much we appreciate what you do each and every day to keep us safe in this community. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Fire Department not only keeps us safe each and every day, but they raise money for very good causes, and so we would like to recognize, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the Tallahassee Fire Department, Local Number 2339, are the prime example of public service and sacrifice, displaying the nobility to protect the citizens of our community every day. And whereas the Tallahassee Fire Department, Local Number 2339, are highly dedicated and trained individuals who demonstrate American ideals, the ultimate standard of character and courage in the face of danger. And whereas the Tallahassee Fire Department, Local Number 2339, selflessly contribute their time and energy fighting for kids and adults with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases that severely limit muscular strength and mobility by filling the boot each year for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, MDA. And whereas in the past 14 years, the Tallahassee Fire Department, Local Number 2339, has raised more than $267,000 for MDA through the annual Fill the Boot campaign. And whereas the Tallahassee Fire Department, Local Number 2339, endless service to MDA has given so much hope for families fighting life-threatening muscular diseases, now, therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 9th through May 11th as Tallahassee Fire Department, Local Number 2339, Fill the Boot Days. In witness of each and every one of you here today, I have affixed my signature dated today's date, May 17, 2019. I would like to present this proclamation to Jasmine and ask you for a few words, but congratulations.
You're a little taller than me. I just wanted to make sure that you all understood how much we appreciate your support in the community, the ones that are actually putting the money into the boots. While this is a union function that we've had for 65 years now, as of this year, we could not do it without the support of the chief as well. So, we just want to make sure that everyone, you know, pay attention to these guys. I know they're not in the streets anymore, but we love being out there and being able to see you guys have a great time with them and see smiling faces. So, thank you so much, and I will let Angel say a few words as well.
Angel? Hello? I'm same height, so it's okay. We all from the Tallahassee Fire Department, we appreciate the commission for allowing us to do this in partnership with our local union. We raised over $7,000, and there'll be more events to come, so please donate all you can. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. In our final presentation today, I'd like to ask Ms. Molly Wade and all the members of Moms Demand Action to please come join me. You are going to see a sea of orange here. This is an amazing organization that does tremendous work in our community, and this is a serious issue that we are currently facing, and together, we're going to solve this. We're going to move forward with this. A proclamation from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides each year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibilities. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January 2013, 2013, Hadiah Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiah and the 100 other Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to the other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7, the first Friday in June in 2019, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 7, 2019, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violent victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, I, John Daley, the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby declare the first Friday in June, June 7, 2019, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness of each and every one of you today, I have signed, John Evans Daley, dated today, May 15, and we are doing this today, May 15, so we have plenty of time as a community to come together and support the activities that will take place in June. I honestly don't know whether to clap or not. This is a very serious issue, but I am going to ask Ms. Molly to please come and accept this proclamation on behalf of the city of Tallahassee. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm trying not to pass out. On behalf of Moms Demand Action, we would like to thank the City Commission and Mayor John Daley for declaring Friday, June 7, National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Tallahassee. In partnership with the Greater Bond Neighborhood Association, we will be hosting a Wear Orange event on Saturday, June 8, at the Tallahassee City Junction Park on Mill Street. Everyone is welcome to this family-friendly event. In conjunction with the Greater Bond Neighborhood Association, we are collecting new and gently-used children's books for Title I schools in Leon County. Book drop sites can be found at TPD Headquarters on 7th Avenue, Whole Child Leon on Lee Avenue, and Bryant's Grocery on Kissimmee Street. Thank you very much.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any announcements?
No, sir.
Mr. City Manager, we're now at the point of the agenda meeting where we ask for citizen input on agenda items. Mr. Clerk, do we have any citizens that wish to speak?
Mayor, we do. The first is Owen McCall on item 1302, your Star Metro route changes agenda item. And I will let him and others who speak know that you have three minutes for your remarks. I'll give you a heads up at about two and a half.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. And if you could provide that heads up verbally, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Owen McCall. I'm a 30-year employee with the state of Florida. Today, in fact, is my 30th anniversary.
Congratulations.
And I also...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you doing drop?
Not yet. I also serve on the city's Transit Advisory Committee, and I'm here today to urge caution in considering the changes that Star Metro is putting forth. I would respectfully dispute the appropriateness of their use of the term enhancements. These proposed changes were sprung on the Transit Advisory Committee at the April 16 meeting. Four of the five members of the Transit Advisory Committee who were present at that meeting expressed reservations. I particularly pointed out one that would involve a cut to a route that I personally use, and one of the Star Metro employees said, "Well, I recognize it may feel like a service cut." And I stopped her, and I said, "If I've got service now and I don't have service later, it doesn't feel like a service cut. It is a service cut." There are people that are going to be affected by these proposed changes. There are a number of individuals that currently have a one-seat ride to get to where they're going who are going to have to have a two-seat ride. There are people on the south side that I think are going to be affected. I've got concerns, and I have concerns as a transit user and as a member of the Transit Advisory Committee, whether or not the 30-day period that Star Metro is proposing for a listening session is sufficient time for the bus-riding public to become sufficiently informed about the proposed changes and to make appropriate, provide appropriate input. They've scheduled four meetings. The first meeting was the day the announcement was made, on May 7. The second meeting is today. There will be a third meeting at CK Steel, and a fourth meeting at the Public Library. I question whether that is enough time for the public to become informed and to provide meaningful feedback. That coupled with the comment that was made to me at the TAC meeting, I recognize this feels like a service cut, causes me great concern.
You have two and a half minutes.
Thank you. Changes need to be made because of the wreck that was Nova 2010, the decentralization that was tried a number of years ago. Changes do need to be made. I just question whether these are the changes that need to be made, and I question whether these changes need to be made on August 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims on item 1301.
Pastor Sims, you name an address for the record, please, in three minutes.
I wanted to speak about legislative update as to the governor, as you know, mayor, has signed the bill, which most we feel is a poll tax with Amendment 4 in the restoration of rights. Where does this play into local government? I've spoken with our supervisor of election, and he's saying if you are confused, apply anyway. And they have the discretion to, you know, answer questions and things of that nature. And so, I really wanted to take this podium for visibility to tell the citizens of Leon County that even though there is, in our opinion, a poll tax, we ask that you just not to assume, but go to the supervisor of election as well and check it out for yourself. My second thing that I want to say is if, I'm trying to live right since I've been having all these strokes, and I may not be here too long, I want to apologize to Mr. Levin if he feels like I've wronged him, and I feel I've wronged him. And I said those things because I felt like I was wrong, and you don't do evil for evil. But I do need this commission to know, and these are not my words, but these were the words of the Tallahassee Democrat, that this mafia culture is coming to an end. It's just unfortunate, we still have some city employees who have not gotten on to the new bandwagon. And the constant delays that Mr. Levin has done and the egregious things that he has said to other key members of this community in order for them not to be favorable to my program was heartening. But I do want to say, that does not give me the right to strike back in a negative fashion. And so, I tried to apologize to him, Mr. Mayor, and he told me he didn't want to hear. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
The only other speaker I have is Dr. Hollifield. I'm not sure if he's agenda items or not. He's got a couple of items listed, and I just got this just at the start of the meeting, so I haven't checked the agenda items. If he may want to go ahead and take him, and then if we have other speakers, we can take him later.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hollifield. You name an address for the record, please. Try to keep it to three minutes, sir.
I'll try real hard. Longleaf Court. I got a notice this morning, 6 o'clock this morning, from an organization called Leapfrog. Anybody familiar with Leapfrog?
Dr. Hollifield, I'm having a hard time hearing from you.
Organization called Leapfrog. I got a notice this morning. Anybody familiar with that? Leapfrog is a national organization, and it rates the safety in hospitals, all the hospitals in the country. The last marking period, and a Democrat actually reported on it briefly, Tallahassee Memorial, which is our hospital because we own the land, the buildings, and everything inside the building. It's a city-owned hospital that we lease to a group of powerful, mainly white men for a dollar a year, but it's our hospital. 6 o'clock in the morning, I get this email from Leapfrog regarding the rating for patient safety for this year, at least this spring, 2019. Well, we got another D. So, that's two Ds in a row regarding patient's safety. In case you're curious, Capital Regional got a C. But it's interesting because Capital Regional, if I recall correctly, got a C last time, too. What TMH did was they criticized the reporting method. What Capital Regional said was, "We got a problem, and we're going to try to do better." So, what we have is a fundamentally different attitude towards improvement, and if you don't do anything to change, it's just going to stay the same. Leapfrog evaluates urinary tract infections?
You have two and a half minutes.
TMH substandard. Staff infections, TMH substandard. Surgical site infections, TMH substandard. The other things they evaluate are infections in the bloodstream, another minute, and infections, an infection called C. diff, which results from the overuse of antibiotics. So, in five of the different categories of infection, TMH was deficient in three of them.
Dr. Hollifield, could you wrap up your comments, please, sir?
Okay. Half minute. TMH just spent $271 million. They squandered it on that Mustang Center, and it's not going to improve patient outcomes at all. It's mainly for profitable operating rooms. So, I, you know, I'll go ahead and end it, but we got a serious problem when our hospital, because we own it through a dollar-a-year lease agreement, apparently in regard to patient safety, simply does not care. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
No further speakers.
All right. Mr. City Manager, do we have any appearances by other governmental agencies, boards?
No, sir.
Okay. We're on the consent agenda item. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda item?
No, sir.
Your motion to approve the consent agenda item. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the mayor pro tem. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We are on item number 11.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves two appointments to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The recommendations are to appoint Mr. L. Kyle Rojas with a term expiring June 2020, and Carol Sunny Phillips, also with a term expiring June 2020.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
First of all, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Sorry. Staff recommendation's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant and Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 11.02.
Mr. Mayor, this item involves the appointment of one individual and two reappointments to the Tallahassee Leon County Minority Women and Small Business Enterprise. The recommended action is to appoint Mr. Gallup P. Franklin III with a term expiring April 2020, to reappoint Brenda Williams with a term expiring April 2020, and to reappoint Wayne E. Mayo with a term expiring April 2021.
Any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioners?
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.03.
Mr. Mayor, this item involves the nomination of one member of the elected commission to serve as the appointee for the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors Nominating Committee. We are looking for your direction as to who that member would, will be.
Any public comment on this?
There is none.
Colleagues, I have served in this position since the transfer from the previous administration to now. This is the spot where the 10th largest municipalities in the state of Florida have a position on the Board of Directors. I served at the full recommendation of the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors. I would love to continue to serve in this capacity if it is the will of this board. I have checked with the city manager and the city attorney to make sure that there was no conflict of interest, and there is none. Is there any discussion?
I'd move that the mayor represent us as our representative on the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
I was just going to say represent us well.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for this opportunity. I certainly appreciate it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. Number 11.04.
Mr. Mayor, this involves the appointment, again, one of the members of the City Commission to the Big Ben Continuum of Care Board. We're seeking your direction on that. I will add in conversations, if it helps, that Commissioner Williams-Cox, this is an area of interest for her, and she has expressed to me her willingness to serve on your behalf.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Cook?
We do not.
Okay. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox serve as our representative on the Board of the Big Ben Continuum of Care.
I will second that motion as well. Commissioner Williams-Cox, thank you for serving on this all-important board.
Serve us well.
I was going to say it. I was going to say it.
Serve us well.
Thank you, colleagues.
Is there any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on the introduction of ordinance. Madam City Attorney, do we have any ordinances that need to be introduced this evening?
There are no ordinances to be introduced this evening.
We are on policy formation and direction, item number 13.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be brief on this as we know the legislative session has now ended, and our friends from around the state have left Tallahassee at this point, and we felt like this would be a good opportunity to kind of punctuate what happened with the legislative session. You have a full update in your agenda material. Christian Doolin, who is our legislative lead, will just give a very high-level summary of what occurred this past session.
Thank you, manager, and mayor, and commissioners. So, as you know, it's been a busy session. I think this is the fourth update here, fifth if you include the CRA update. And as the city manager mentioned, it's a little quieter around here, though many of us are eagerly awaiting the governor's signature on several bills that have moved out of the legislature, including our appropriations requests. No change there. It's 150, our request that was funded is $150,000 for the tempo program, and we're eagerly anticipating the signature of that. This item... This item, as the City Manager mentions, provides kind of an update to the closeout of the session. It includes several of the list of bills that are moving to the Governor and several that died along the way. We're here to keep you posted as if anything changes based on the Governor's signature. And we're here for any questions or follow-ups that you'd like.
Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Before we open it up, Mr. Doolin, this was your first year in this role after we made the transition from the Mayor's Office to the Manager's Office, and you and your team with Mr. Burtman and everyone else did a fantastic job. We appreciate what Mr. Book also did representing the city of Tallahassee. Thank you. Really do appreciate it. Opening up for comment and motion to accept the report. Mr. Matlow?
Well, thank you for the update, and, you know, we're appreciative of the support of the state government for the tempo program. I think it's gonna be a good program as it really starts to ramp up. I know as our state lobbyist contract comes up to expire, I think we need to reexamine the return we're getting versus appropriations versus how much we're spending on it. So I hope we look at how much we're spending for state lobbyists and seeing what our actual return is as we bid that out the next time around.
Good point. Any other comment? Yeah, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I think I either remember this or I Googled it, that even if the Governor doesn't sign, he has 15 days to sign, they go into law without his signature, as I understand it. So we'd appreciate his signature, but if it's gonna go into law without his signature, we appreciate that as well.
Any further comment?
Yes, one follow-up. There are several bills that are awaiting the Governor's signature, and several of them, I think, directly relate to us as a city. And I think it would be good, once they are signed, which they probably will be, to specifically get updates on those things that will impact the city of Tallahassee immediately.
Yes, ma'am. I can say, in several of these areas, we already have multiple departments that are working in anticipation of that with our legal team as well. So as these become more firm, you will likely get the direct updates on each individual impact as necessary.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved the report. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you again, Mr. Doolin. We are now on item number 13.02. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, 13.02 involves an update for Star Metro. They have embarked upon a process to evaluate the system performance every year to make sure it's operating efficiently and effectively and meets the needs of our riders. In December, Star Metro actually took a survey at CK Steel Plaza, just taking the pulse of our riders to see what was on their mind. And one of the things was noted in particular was on-time performance. And as you might imagine, if you're riding the bus, you're expecting it to be on schedule. You're at a stop, you're expecting it to be there, hopefully on time. We understand there's occurrences that impact that day-to-day, but what we found was some of the routes were not performing on time as scheduled. Over the last number of months, staff has worked on that to identify opportunities to improve that on-time performance. I'm very pleased with the recommendations they have. We are a very educational-centric community, so our schedules tend to be on the schedules of our universities and K-12 system. And so they're recommending implementing these changes commensurate with that in October. So they're out, as we speak, seeking feedback from our riders. It's about a month-long process. They're on the bus, they're at the plaza, sharing with the riders what the recommended changes might be. And so that's in motion now. We wanted to take an opportunity to share with you, at this point in time, in May, what those recommended actions are. Angela Baldwin is our Director of Star Metro. She's gonna do the presentation. Before she gets there, I'm gonna throw her a curveball because I'm very pleased to see that we have our newest Superintendent of Transit, the person that makes the system run, Lawrence Ransom. I'm gonna embarrass you for a second. Lawrence, if you can stand up and just wave to the crowd, I'm glad you're here tonight.
Thank you.
He's newly appointed to the role. I believe, thank you for letting me embarrass you. I believe he's been with the city for about 19 years, or thereabouts. Maybe we'll give him 20. We'll give him an extra credit for 20 years. But he's been with us for some time, knows the system, and I think he's doing a great job. And so with that, I'd like Angela just to give us a brief overview of the recommended actions.
Angela, good to see you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Appointed Officials. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your time. It's a pleasure for us to present this opportunity, to present this update to you on Star Metro and some of the enhancements that we made, some of the proposed route changes and the community outreach that we've embarked on. I'd like to begin with a quick overview of our transit system and some of the services that we provide. Star Metro operates 66 buses in our fleet. We have 23 weekday routes, including FSU, 12 Saturday routes, five night routes, and four Sunday routes, moving over 3.2 million people per year. The city is becoming a leader in sustainability. We have four electric buses, 12 CNG buses. Later this year, as you're aware, we'll be adding 15 additional electric buses to our fleet, equalling one-third of our fleet. In addition, we run five trolleys, serving almost 7,000 patrons in 2018, and 26 pair transit vehicles that provided over 150,000 requested trips in 2018. We're in the process of installing 150 more benches. You've probably seen those being put out. 175 trash receptacles. And as we continue to upgrade our amenities at our 914 stops, and all of them which are equipped with Braille. Star Metro is continually striving to provide better customer service, including upgrading our technology for easier rider access and purchases. As we continue the use of enhanced technology, our fixed route and now dial-a-ride customers can now purchase their fares online and through an app, as well as plan their trips. Through surveys and customer interactions, Star Metro continues to get positive feedback from our frequent riders regarding our customer service, our buses, and our overall performance. One of the largest areas of concern, as the Manager pointed out, for our customers is our on-time performance. And before our Transit Planning Manager, Andrea Rosso, comes forward to discuss what on-time performance means and how we propose to address this, I would like to share that the last time that we made any major route changes was in 2015. And to reiterate, as a transit system that moves millions of people per year, including our residents, our veterans, our students, getting them to and from work, appointments and other life-sustaining needs, our highest priority is to move people safely, followed by providing quality customer service. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. Andrew will now come forward to summarize the proposed route changes.
Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. As Angela stated, the main objective for the 2019 proposed route changes is to improve on-time performance. Star Metro's goal, and also the national best-practice benchmark, is at 85%. Currently, we're at 79%. Many factors contribute to on-time performance, including traffic patterns, especially during peak travel times, accidents, detours, as well as how long it takes our customers to board the bus. Our goal is to ensure that all of our routes are responsive to the needs of our customers. However, with a fixed number of buses, we have to effectively allocate these resources. To begin the process of the 2019 route changes, our team took into account ridership data, customer surveys, as well as national best practices in transit. We also worked with our Employee Solutions Committee, which consists of operators, dispatchers, as well as planners. Many of the changes add services or refine existing services to meet our on-time performance goals. In other cases, it was just a matter of changing the timing of a route for better connectivity for our customers. For example, I want to talk about the Azalea Route. This route runs mainly on the Tennessee Street, Mahan Drive corridor, with service every 30 minutes during peak commute times and once an hour during the midday. As you can see on the image in front of you, the circles represent boardings at each stop along the route. The largest circle in the middle is at CK Steel Plaza. If you look on the left side of the map, you'll see that the majority of the boardings are on the west side of this route. Because of traffic congestion and ridership on the west side, this route consistently runs late. Therefore, our proposal on this route is to split it at CK Steel Plaza, provide 30-minute service all day on the west side by adding a bus, while maintaining today's 30-minute service in the peak and 60-minute service in the off-peak on the east side. This change should increase on-time performance and thus customer satisfaction. We've done the same, this type of analysis on other routes with the end goal to increase on-time performance. Here's a quick look at all of our proposed route changes. In total, we'll be impacting 11 of our 23 weekday routes. We propose to eliminate one route, the Canopy Route. By the way, all the stops on the Canopy Route are served by other routes. And we propose to reallocate the two buses from the Canopy, one to the Azalea, one to the Big Ben. All of our summaries and detailed changes are available on our dedicated website, and we hand these out at our public meetings, our customer feedback sessions, and at pop-up events. We opened our 30-day public input period last month with a pop-up event at CK Steel Plaza, where staff interacted with over 200 customers. The public is also encouraged to review the information online and take our online survey, and of course, they can call Star Metro if they need more information. The public input period is a continuing effort until June 5. It includes ambassadors on our buses to talk directly with citizens, to help them understand if these changes will affect them, and we'll get feedback from that, as well as meetings with neighborhood associations such as Providence Neighborhood, Griffin Heights, as well as Liberty Park. Over this period, after this period is over, we will take all the feedback we've received, address the concerns, and we'll prepare final route change recommendations. Standard practice in the transit industry is for route changes to be enacted over the summer before the start of the new school year. This is critical for our customers. As the City Manager stated, we serve so many K-12 students, as well as higher education students. Therefore, if we launch the changes on Saturday, August 3, it will be in advance of the public school start date of August 12. In closing, our team is already working with Communications and Neighborhood Affairs and is prepared to make these system-wide changes, such as new signage and Braille at stops, and new maps and brochures for each route. And we also have a communication plan in place to inform the community of the final changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. We're able to take any questions if you have any.
All righty. Mr. City Manager, any final comments?
Only that we recommend that you accept the Star Metro update, and of course, we welcome any comments.
Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have comment on 13.02. No, sir.
Open it up for conversation, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Baldwin, could you address the issues that your Citizen Advisory Committee member made? That it sounded like what he was saying is that they had not been involved in the process. Have they been involved? And at the meeting that he alluded to, was there a position taken by the Citizen Advisory Committee on the proposed changes?
At the meeting, we presented that afternoon the changes that you've seen today, and we allowed opportunity for feedback. We also expressed to the TAC, that we call them the TAC members, that we would be more than happy to schedule individual meetings, which I think we've had some of those individual meetings with those members, and taking that information into consideration. We have a 30-day public feedback, and their information is very valuable to what we do. So we will be taking those recommendations into consideration. There has been no stance taken at this time.
Right. Just to follow up, Mr. Mayor. So at this point, everything is still tentative. There have not been definite routes established. You're still taking public input, and that will be figured into what the ultimate route configuration will be.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Colleagues, any further comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Great job on the presentation. Thank you for the information. Could you give me the dates of the next citizen engagement activities? I know, I think I heard it's gonna be one at CK Steel.
There's one on May 20 at the Providence Community Center. There's one on Thursday, a second one at CK Steel Plaza where most of our patrons do come through. And there's also one on May 29 at the Leon County, Leroy Collins Leon County Library. And we're also presenting to the Sustainable Tallahassee and other neighborhood groups.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you for the presentation. I think on-time performance is critical, and I know there's a lot to work through with traffic and really trying to figure out the ins and outs of that. So we appreciate the hard work there. I know, growing up, taking the bus, it's not, people aren't taking it because, you know, they necessarily want to. They're taking it because they have to. So I think when we talk about the community engagement, it makes sure we're doing the best job we can and really, you know, listening, because it's not affecting us, right? But also, on-time performance, if the bus goes by five minutes early and you see it pass by, you can also be late for work. So there's definitely a balance there. I had a question about the ambassadors on the bus lines. Are they providing kind of route-specific information? This is gonna change on this specific route. It's gonna come at a different time?
That is correct. That is what the ambassadors will be doing.
Okay. And do we have any literature specific to the route? Just because to me, there's a lot of information on here, and maybe if you're just taking one or two specific routes, it may be more clear. What's gonna change on the actual bus that you're on?
I believe on the website, you will see individual sheets. Am I correct, Andrea? You will see individual sheets of those specific routes on the website.
Angela, are we sharing that on the bus? How is it displayed on the bus?
On the buses, we have those, that information posted on the buses as well. Yes, I'm looking at my. Just to be safe.
And then the last point, Mr. City Manager, there was a concern that the route information came to the TAC, maybe the day of the meeting, rather than, and I hope with all of our advisory committees, I know we've seen things come up last minute that are just proposed, or, you know, these sorts of things. I hope all of our advisory committees get the same courtesy we have of a week prior notice to what's gonna be discussed at that meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, we'll take that into consideration, yes.
Any other comments? Questions? Motions? Move acceptance of the update?
Second.
Commissioner Williams-Cox moves acceptance of the staff recommendation, properly seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass unanimously, 5-0. Before we move on to 13.03, I'd like to take a point, personal privilege. We have a young man from Boy Scouts that's here today, and I want to thank you for coming out, learning more about your city government. And when we take a break, we'd love to spend some time with you and answer any questions that you have, but thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, we are on item number 13.03.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that you, or a topic that you have discussed in the past. In fact, at your April 10 meeting, you directed us to monitor state legislation because we anticipated or thought that there may be some action on that as it relates to e-scooters. In fact, the state did act. They were kind to local authorities and left us with a lot of say in how we might choose to regulate e-scooters in our community, including on roadways and sidewalks. Julie Christensen is our expert. She's done a great job, and I want her to give you a presentation. But before that, I want to frame what we're asking you to do, because I think it's very important. The legislation that the state has passed really requires you to act at this point. In the absence of acting, there will be no structure to a program related to e-scooters. And that's really the opposite of what I think we were talking about a few months ago, because I think there was a default structure. So we are recommending that you adopt three options, and bear with me, I know Julie will reframe those, but I want to set this in place for the discussion, to direct staff to issue a request for information, to obtain information from interested e-scooter share companies for a pilot program. We can do that right away with your approval. The option two, to accept the pilot parameters presented by staff in this agenda item. Julie will frame those, but essentially what we're asking is that, or recommending, is that scooters be allowed on our roadways, our sidewalks, excluding our university campuses and TCC. And then direct us to bring back an introduction of an ordinance on June 5, instead of public hearing for an ordinance on June 19 that would effectuate these changes. So normally, I'd wait till the end to give that frame, but I think it's important. Julie can give us a little background, and then we're looking forward to your feedback. So Julie?
Thank you. Good framing. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. Today, I'll be presenting some information about a potential e-scooter pilot program and giving you an update on new legislation. Before I get started, I just want to mention that we're really ahead of the curve on dealing with this new legislation as it was just passed in the last couple of weeks. So as you can see on your screen, there is some new regulatory framework. So under the new Florida regulations, motorized scooters are treated the same as b- So under the new Florida regulations, motorized scooters are treated the same as bicycles. So bicycles are allowed on sidewalks and bicycle lanes and on roadways. If there is no bicycle lane, cyclists are, they're required to ride as close to the right-hand curb as is practicable, with some exceptions. So this means that anywhere that bicycles can go, e-scooters have also been given the ability to go there legally. Local governments can regulate e-scooters with respect to streets, highways, and sidewalks under the local government's jurisdiction. It allows the operation of a motorized scooter without a valid driver's license, requires vendors who offer these scooters to make sure that the vehicles are secured if there's a hurricane warning, and it also excludes motorized scooters from compliance with vehicle registration, licensing, and insurance requirements. So just to summarize, although e-scooters are now legally allowed on sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and on the roadway, local governments can regulate where they go. So this is just a quick slide to go over the pilot program process for the city of Tallahassee. So if the commission so desires, the city can define a pilot program and invite one or more companies to participate, pick the number of firms, define the goals of the program, specify the pilot area, and minimum specifications of the scooter itself. But at the end of the pilot program, the piloting companies must discontinue the service that they're piloting. So if the commission chooses to move forward with a pilot program, there's a timeline outlined in the agenda that provides some key dates, and they're also shown on this slide. So from May to June, staff would do some background work. We would put together a request for information and release the request for information. You would set the pilot program parameters. And then the next two dates on the slide are actually city commission meetings, and at those meetings, you could implement steps and you had to kick off a program by July 15th. This would include the introduction of ordinance, approval of a permit process, and having the public hearing on the ordinance, and then you could evaluate the staff recommendation of e-scooter vendors. So this slide really goes over the how long, how many, and when of any potential program. So staff is recommending a three-month pilot program with no more than three e-scooter share companies, for a total maximum of 1,000 scooters distributed equally among the number that you choose. It could begin as early as July 15th and could end on October 15th. That would be three months, but the end date would be contingent on the start date. So some of the criteria that staff identified and potentially helping with vendor selection would be the availability of additional micromobility options. Preference could be provided for vendors that also have the ability and willingness to provide other micromobility options, things like bikes, e-bikes, electric ride-share. This provides a value to our community by providing transportation and recreation choice, and this would come at a later date. The parking approach that we would recommend would be vendors to immediately respond to any parking issues that might arise throughout the day, and that goes along with the rebalancing, which is where the vendor makes sure that the scooters are where they should be. So we would request that vendors rebalance the e-scooters throughout the day as necessary and each morning after they're charged. For charging methods, we would request that the vendors collect the e-scooters each night and charge them in a warehouse. When it comes to coverage area, we're suggesting that they be allowed throughout the city. However, that vendor should geofence out FSU, FAMU, and TCC until such time as those entities come to an agreement with their selected vendor. The number of motorized scooters proposed is no more than 1,000. The scooter speeds need to be capped at 15 miles an hour. Vendors should provide the data listed in the agenda item to the city, and they should work with the city on appropriate user education. The last part is coordination with partners, and I just want to show you guys a quick map here. So when we speak about coordination with partners, we're really talking about FSU, TCC, and FAMU as some of the major partners. As of today, none of those entities have expressed that they would like to be included in this pilot project. So to be respectful of their wishes, staff would recommend geofencing out the campuses until such time as entities come to an agreement with an e-scooter share vendor or request to be included in the coverage area. So this is what that would look like. This is our bicycle facility network map, and this just shows you where the campuses are and what like kind of the dead spaces would be. And this is the entire city. I know it's hard to see there, but this is our whole bicycle network with the campuses identified as well. So this has Shero's, bike boulevards, on-street bike lanes, protected bike lanes, anything that you would use to get around the community on a bike. And that brings me to our options. Staff is recommending three options, as the city manager mentioned. Option one, to direct staff to issue a request for information to obtain responses from interested e-scooter share companies for a pilot program. Accept pilot parameters presented by staff in this agenda item. Direct staff to bring back an introduction of ordinance on June 5th, and set the public hearing for the ordinance for June 19th. And that's it.
Excellent job. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item, Servando Esparza. As with the other part of our meeting, three minutes and a name and address would be appreciated.
Welcome. Thanks for joining us.
So, thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Servando Esparza, and I'm Senior Manager of Government Partnerships at Bird. For the record, my address is 810 West St. John's Avenue, Austin, Texas, 787-52.
Welcome to Tallahassee.
Thank you. The Bird Scooters was the first shared e-scooter operator and the only operator providing scooters in every Florida city that currently authorizes scooters, and we're thrilled that the city is looking into establishing this program. Tampa is about to start theirs in a couple of, hopefully, days, but in the coming weeks. And then Miami has a program, Coral Gables, and then Fort Lauderdale. The NACTA, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials, just came out with a report recently showing that the number of scooter rides is now larger than all the rides in dock-based bike share and dockless bike shares. So this is incredibly popular mode of transportation for the first and last mile. I'm here because I'm addressing one recommendation in option two, which is the giving preference to vendors that also have the ability and willingness to provide other micromobility options, such as e-bikes, regular bikes, and electric ride-share. Essentially, this would give, this would put other companies at an advantage, because Bird only supplies and operates e-scooters. This is the way that this is framed. This is only an e-scooter program, so we want just an even playing field, and we want to make sure that that, that's addressed in this, in option two. We think, you know, that we're operating in every city that authorizes them in Florida, that we have the most experience being the first, and we continue to improve. With this recommendation moving forward, it would definitely put us at a disadvantage when the selection process moves forward. So respectfully, we ask that preference not be included in that, and we look forward to working with you and your team. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other speakers? Mr. Cook?
No, sir. That was the only speaker on this item.
Okay. Let's open it up for questions or comments. Mr. Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think staff has done an excellent job of bringing us back something that we can certainly consider. I have just two concerns, well, one question and then a concern. The question is, have you all addressed the issue of insurance and liability, or will that be addressed in the request for information?
I'll speak to that briefly, Commissioner. Haven't had extensive discussions, but we, early on, when this item came up, we made sure that that was one of the items that would be considered, so it will be considered in this RFI. The intent would be, our arrangements with each of the scooter companies would ensure that liability rests with them for their service.
Okay. And then lastly, I, you know, I understand that, you know, we would have to pass an ordinance allowing these scooters to traverse on sidewalks. I'm, I've thought about it, I've considered it, and I am just not comfortable with having these motorized vehicles sharing a sidewalk with pedestrians. So that one, I just, I can't wrap my arms around that one. So I would suggest, Commission and Mayor, that we not allow, I mean, bike lanes, roadways, I'm comfortable with, but sharing sidewalks, I just am not comfortable with that one at all.
Staff, like to weigh in?
I could probably add, with that, I think Commissioner Richardson, we do also have multi-use trails that are emerging that are wider than what we think of as sidewalks. If you chose to exclude access to the scooters, it may be appropriate to include bike lanes, obviously roadways, and multi-use trails that we do have some of in our community, but exclude those traditional sidewalks. That would be certainly an option for your consideration.
Okay. I'd be comfortable with that.
And that would have to be clarified in the ordinance itself, that that is that the use is permitted, because otherwise, they wouldn't be able to use the sidewalks. You have to state in the ordinance what you would like to happen.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I wanted to say to Commissioner Richardson, I had a similar concern, but I reconsidered. I slept on it. And we're talking about a pilot. How will we know the impact if we don't pilot it, to get, to gather data? And so I'm open to allowing this pilot to run on the street and on the sidewalks and the multi-lane trails, so that we can capture the information to see in a three-month period. Is that an issue? Is that really an issue? Because bicycles are also on sidewalks, regardless of how wide and narrow they are, and I think that we need to give it a chance just to, just to see. And if the data comes back where there, you know, there's some concerns or major issues, then we will, we will know then better how to proceed with that. So I'm, I'm of the opinion that we should do both for this trial period. My other issue is that we're saying 1,000 scooters with three vendors. Well, you know, I'm doing that simple math, three into 1,000 is not an equal number of times. So I would suggest that we allow the number of scooters to be divisible by three, so that each vendor has equal opportunity to have their product on the street, or on the sidewalks.
Okay. Other questions? Concerns?
Yeah.
Discussions? Commissioner Matlow.
I, I share kind of two sides of that concern, Commissioner Richardson. One, I don't want somebody hitting me on a scooter while I'm walking down the street at 50 miles per hour, but at the same time, we have roadways that the safest place for a scooter might be the sidewalk, where there aren't typically a lot of pedestrians, and how do we balance forcing them into maybe a more dangerous situation for the actual rider? So I think the pilot may make sense to see how that shakes out. I don't have strong feelings about where they ride, but I would, you know, like to see that data. I think we should make it 999 scooters. Divisible by three.
Divisible by three. I'll take that.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner. Yes. Commissioner Matt.
Both of you made very interesting comments, Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Williams-Cox, about, and about the possibility for any kind of injury liability, whether it's on the street or the sidewalk. I'm not opposed to the pilot, but I will say we need to do it, whether it's in the first three months of a pilot, or it's after we decide yay or nay, that whatever, and I think in our, in our package, there was, there is a comment that the city attorney's office does have great concern regarding the liability exposure. I share that concern, probably because I'm, well, I won't say that. I had some engagement with one of them. But I'm willing to go with the pilot program, but I do wonder, we, I think we recommended one staff person. I don't know how one staff person is going to keep up with what sounds like the parameters involved with the various requirements that we have in order to have the pilot. How do we know they ended back up? And maybe it's done through the app, that they ended back up in the warehouse, that when a storm or whatever was, the warning came, that the scooters actually left the places where they might cause danger. How do we know? How are we going to gather the data such that we can make an informed decision when the pilot is over? Now, that does concern me, and I think that that needs to be fleshed out as we bring back to the commission, or maybe that's information we'll get through the RFI, but those are my concerns.
All right, a couple of comments. I think that it would be, I think we have a responsibility to do the pilot program in light of the state legislation that has passed. If this body does not take action, then it's a free-for-all. And I think that it is very smart to move forward with the, with the pilot program, where we could put some parameters around. Having said that, a couple of concerns, and I want staff to address these as we move forward in the process, and I look forward to supporting the measure tonight. First of all, it's going to be a very interesting relationship with the university campuses, because my understanding is, even with the geofence, and Julie helped me out with this, you cannot stop a scooter in motion, but once the scooter comes to rest, it will not start again. So the question is, are we going to create a scenario where if you have a student that breaks the geofence, gets on campus somewhere, and then comes to a stop, but the scooter will not start again, because you are inside of the prohibited area, they're going to ditch the scooter right there, and they're just going to keep going? So are we creating a scenario where the university community as well is going to be upset with us because of the fact that we are going to be leaving scooters on campuses that are not operable? Have we addressed this yet with the university community?
I think that the technology is constantly evolving with geofencing, from what I understand from research, and I think that the companies may have different ways that they deal with not allowing, or not allowing their scooters to go on campus, but I think there's really not quite any way to know at the moment.
Okay. These are issues that I think that we need to continue to work for, and I'm asking the industry to help with this, okay? How can we come up with appropriate solutions? In my conversations with the industry, and from a public safety standpoint, if you're going 15 miles per hour on a scooter, you are not going to come to a full stop when you hit the imaginary geofence, right? You're going to wait till the scooter stops, but then it will not start back up. So are we creating a scenario in that scenario where the scooter's just then parked on the side in the middle of the university campus? Let's all work together on this issue, okay? Number two, infrastructure. Commissioner Matlow, and actually everyone, I agree, you know? Do we go only with the streets, or when appropriate, when I wouldn't be on a scooter in the street, do you allow on the sidewalks, okay? If we allow on the sidewalks, I am extremely concerned about our infrastructure. As you notice in downtown Tallahassee, we have marked up our sidewalks with orange spray paint, where we have already, as we're moving forward with improvements to our sidewalks, we have already identified every problem area in downtown Tallahassee. When it comes to the liability question, Madam City Attorney, I am asking you to provide us with as much coverage as you possibly can, knowing that no matter what happens, somebody can still sue us. But the fact of the matter is, is that if we allowed scooters today, you're going down a sidewalk on Monroe Street, and you hit one of those cracks that we have already spray painted as this is a problem area, what type of exposure do we have from the city, and we need to work through this with the industry? We could put in paper all you want about, you know, 100% protection, but at the end of the day, if we get sued, we still get sued, and we have to argue that position in court, which is time and money, okay? Now, the flip side is, if we prohibit scooters on sidewalks, come on, y'all, we know these scooters are going to be on sidewalks, right? Who's going to enforce that? Because it is not going to be the role and responsibility of, you know, Tallahassee's finest in blue, Tallahassee Police Department, to go out there and start handing out tickets for people riding a scooter on sidewalks. So I do think it's appropriate in the pilot to allow it on sidewalks, okay? We've got much more important issues that we should be dealing with. But I have to get on the record the liability issue. I have to get on the record also my concern, being the university town, students, and alcohol, and scooters. I'm just going to put it out there. First time, and hopefully, it will not be our community, but you know it's going to happen soon enough, because I am, am I correct, that in the state of Florida, you can technically get a DUI on a scooter or on a bicycle?
Yes, the same laws apply.
Heaven forbid.
We have responsibilities.
Heaven forbid you mix it together. Now, the argument is, we can cut scooters off at 8 o'clock at night. You know, you got college kids that start drinking on a Friday at noon. There's going to be a ways around it. I'm just saying that work with this industry on best practices, on how to deal with the alcohol and scooter issue around college campuses. Now, I would also suggest that we do not start the pilot program in July. If we're in, we're all in, right, for a scooter program, and we should consider starting closer to, say, August. The reason why is, July 15th, there are no students in town. July 15th, you don't have committee week downtown, okay? So if you want to maximize and truly get a test of how scooters could positively impact or negatively impact the community, I would say we propose maybe an August 15th start date, so we So we start when the students are back, okay, for the college town area and the downtown area, but also I believe in September is where we start back with committee weeks for the session. You'll have people in downtown Tallahassee will probably be able to maximize usage. It's just something to consider. That's not a decision that's going to be made tonight, but let's keep that in consideration as well. I am prepared to vote in favor of this moving forward. I just needed to get my concerns out on the record as well. We'll go to Mayor Pro Tim, and then we'll go to Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, 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 I am, I agree that we need to do something, because if we don't act, it becomes a free-for-all. But I still have a concern with public safety.
Right.
I rode one of these scooters myself, and it was when nobody else was on the sidewalk.
I got a question. Did you get any pictures of that, by chance?
I don't think they got any pictures. Max, did you get any pictures?
Anybody get any pictures?
But I would not have wanted anyone on that sidewalk other than myself when I was struggling trying to maintain control of that thing. I, I guess, I, my, my concerns could be allayed, Wayne, or Mr. City Manager, if we could maybe get some information from other cities, what their experience has been with these scooters being on sidewalks, if there have been, you know, any, any incidents of collisions between pedestrians. That, that's my issue, is, is the public safety aspect of this. And, and, I mean, on a bicycle, you've got, you've got much more control than, than a 15 mile an hour scooter, where you're standing and trying to control that thing if you don't have very good balance. And so that, that's my concern. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Williams-Cox, that, you know, if we put the pilot, but even if one person were injured by one of these things, you know, I don't know how I would feel about that, even with a pilot. So I, I mean, I would reluctantly support it, because I do want to see us move forward. I think this is an excellent transportation, or could potentially be an excellent transportation alternative for our citizens and, and guests. It's in keeping with our commitment to reduce our carbon footprint, and some of the other, and it's consistent with some of the other initiatives that we've implemented, like solar and the electric buses and natural gas and, and some of the others. It's consistent with that, getting people out of cars and lessening traffic on the streets, if that's part of the outcome of this. But I, I do have some concerns about that public safety issue. So if, if I could just even get information on what has been the case in other cities, I, I would feel more comfortable, I think.
All right, I'm counting noses of a 5-0 unanimous moving forward. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Well, I, I am supporting, but I wanted to speak to your point about delaying the start. I think that in pilots, you want to start slow and scale up. And if we start in August, when everybody's here, that's, to me, is not a, a good time to start up. I think we need to start slow, while, while the traffic is slow, as we gear up, because I rode the scooter as well down the sidewalk in heels, and I will tell you, I was scared to death.
Did you get pictures?
I don't know. Somebody got pictures, maybe. But I do understand too that, that e-scooter was not designed for, for somebody of my age and older, who, who might be, have, have some balance issues and afraid of not having cover.
I resemble that statement.
So, so I'm just going, I'm just talking about me now, just talking about me. So I may not be the target market for it, but I agree that as we move towards our renewable energy plan, that we need to look at alternative forms of transportation to help us reduce the, the carbon footprint. So I think that we should begin the pilot according to the schedule that was recommended by, by staff, so that we can finish it before the onslaught of football season, because strange things do happen in this town when football returns. So, like drinking and trying to do a scooter. So hopefully, I, I would just offer that we go ahead and do it, and I, I look forward to supporting, moving forward with the streets and the sidewalks.
Sounds great. Commissioner Mattlow, you want to make a motion for us?
Sure, I move option one, two, and three with the edit to 999 scooters instead of 1,000. And, and if, we could also get some information if there's any statistical relevance of pedestrian safety with these devices.
Excellent, there's a second to the motion. Probably moved by Commissioner Mattlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim.
Mr. Mayor? Does that include sidewalks? Want to make sure for the, the red motion includes the sidewalks, ask staff, thank you.
Sidewalks are part of the staff recommendation, yes, sir. It's been properly moved. Options one, two, and three with the addendum. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We, Commissioners, we have one more item, and we've got plenty of time, I believe, to take it up before the break. We have 13.04, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, this, this actually item is, is quick. It does involve the purchase of the Northwood Center, so you've acted upon that back in April, and we had an update subsequent to that. When we participated in the auction, we were the successful bidder in the acquisition of the Northwood Center, approximately 35 acres in the center of our town. We are nearing the point of closing, that's scheduled for May 20th, which, at which time we will become the owner. In order to do so, we are seeking your approval of Resolution 19-R-18, which authorizes the acquisition of the property.
Do we have any public speakers on this item?
We do not.
Commissioners, comments, questions, motions?
Move staff recommendations, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Dr. Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have any other items come before policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Commissioners, we stand in recess till 6 o'clock, public hearing. Great job, good work. We have three Commissioners in chambers, we have a quorum, let's move forward with the public hearing. We have three items this evening. First of all, we have 15.01, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, Madam City Attorney.
Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on the Third Amendment to the Integrated Development Order for the Southwood Development of Regional Impact.
Do we have any public comment?
Mayor, we have one speaker on the item, Darren Taylor, and I believe he's here to answer questions if you have them, so he does not have to come forward. He nodded yes, that is correct. If you have questions, he's here to answer.
Sounds great. Without any other public comment, Commissioners?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. No further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. 15.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 19-Z-09, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severalability, and providing an effective date.
Sounds great. Do we have any public comment?
No speakers.
No speakers.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim has properly moved the item. Is there a second for the item? Commissioner Bryant and Commissioner Mattlow both seconded, seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Number 15.03, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.03 is the first of two public hearings on the FAMU Campus Development Agreement. The second public hearing is scheduled for June 19th, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM at the Smith Williams Service Center. This item does not require action by the City Commission at this time, only the public hearing.
So no action is needed. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No speakers.
Okay. Anybody care to comment on it? No action is needed. Moving on, do we have any other items on the public hearing?
No, Mayor, thank you.
We are now on un-agenda business speakers. Is there anyone from the public that was here that would like to speak on any item before the city?
Mayor, we do have one. Alden Hutchison would like to speak, actually, on item 1302, was not able to be here at the earlier portion of the meeting, but wanted to speak now.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for joining us.
If you'll give us your name and address, we'll give you three minutes for your comments.
Thank you. I'm Alden Hutchison. I live at 528 East Call Street. I wanted to make it here in time to talk about the Star Metro changes, but I couldn't get here in time. I was a daily bus rider from 2016 to 2018. As a resident of downtown Tallahassee, I have a seven-minute walk to the Plaza, 10 minutes if I have my children with me. After the last major change decreasing the frequency of Star Metro routes, my family decided it was time to buy a car. We still ride the bus from time to time, but now maybe twice a month. The Star Metro goal is on-time performance. I'd like to speak about the need for frequency. With the proposed change, the changes might improve the timeliness of the buses, but the frequency will be lost. The Canopy Route is part of the multimodal district. By discontinuing, riders will lose the 15-minute frequency that they're used to during peak hours on West Tennessee Street, and a connection to TCC. 15-minute wait at a restaurant is manageable. 30-minute wait, all of a sudden you're thinking about another way to find your food. That happened to my family, we bought a car. Frequency in a bus system equals freedom. Riders stop planning their lives around a timetable. You don't need your app anymore, your bus will just be here soon. I've got a couple other things I'd like to say about the changes, but for time's sake, I'll just write or go to one of the meetings.
You can, you can take, take your time.
Oh, okay.
You're our only speaker this evening, so please.
They're just kind of, you know, the changes to the Park and the Evergreen routes, you also lose 15-minute frequency during the peak hours, and that's also in the multimodal area. Perhaps if the Dogwood Route is going to be 60 minutes all day, the Evergreen Route could go to 30 minutes all day, since that connects to TCC and it goes across the city. Killarney and Red Hills, you lose that ability to transfer up in that area of town by the Killarney Route, not connecting into the Fresh Market, I don't know what that area's called, but I know that that area is not especially walkable, so by not looping into there, you lose a safe place to do a transfer to the Red Hills. The new routes, sounds like they're just being renamed, they already exist, so they're not really adding anything new. We're growing, Tallahassee's growing, we're building density downtown. I'd like to see people supporting bus frequency and considering bus rapid transit in our multimodal districts. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your recommendations. I know you've put a lot of thought and time into them. If you wouldn't mind, we are, and what we said at the agenda item, is that we are still taking public comment.
Great.
You have some very good suggestions that need to be taken in consideration. If you'll please email those to us, and to the City Manager, we will make sure it's all taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll reach out. We've got her contact information.
I've been here before.
You know how to follow up, thank you.
Thank you.
But thanks for coming out, we appreciate it. Any other citizens here have anything to say before the City Commission? All right, let's move into the sharing of ideas. I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Commissioner Mattlow? Mr. Williams-Cox? Commissioner Bryant? The City Manager?
I'm good.
I'd like to say I think we have broken a record. It is 6:09, and we stand adjourned.
Woo-hoo.
Let's do it.